We'll wait just a few more minutes. We're hoping more of the Planning Commission will come in and be seated, so if you'll bear with us, maybe four more minutes, three more minutes, something like that, till about five after. We'll see if... All this special Port Orchard Joint Council Meeting and Planning Commission Meeting to order. This is June 5th, 2014, 7:00 PM at City of Port Orchard City Hall. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. And we're kind of hoping that a few more will come, but we'll just continue with Business Item Two. Clerk Reinderson, would you tell us about...
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
So pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code 5.32080 requires council approval on an organization requesting to operate a carnival within the city. On June 4th, 2014, Paradise Amusements submitted an application requesting to hold a carnival in the South Kitsap Mall parking lot, beginning Thursday, June 5th, and ending Sunday, June 8th. They have paid the required fees and has met the city's insurance requirements. Due to receiving the paperwork on short notice, staff is seeking ratification of the issuance of a carnival license to Paradise Amusements. And I believe that the council and the mayor have been provided a staff report, their application, and comments provided by the Fire Department, Public Works, Planning, Finance Department. I think that's it. So just looking for ratification of them to hold the... continue to hold the carnival.
Yes.
I move to ratify the issuance of a carnival license for Paradise Amusements to be held in the South Kitsap Mall parking lot, beginning Thursday, June 5th, that's today, 2014, and ending Sunday, June 8th, 2014.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Questions? Yes, Mr. Patonson.
How do we get where we're operating today but not adopting this till this evening?
They didn't let us know till yesterday.
Is that what... So I have this question. How have we got here?
It's my understanding that the Paradise Amusement had contacted the city approximately two weeks ago, spoke to a member of the Planning Department. When they spoke to the Planning Department, they were requested to fill out a certificate of occupancy permit. When they filled out the certificate of occupancy permit, about a week and a half ago, they were ready to pick that up. They first asked the city if there was any documentations that they needed to hold the event, and that's when they said, "Yeah, you need a C of O." So they came in, filled out the C of O, came back another day or two later to pick up the C of O. Upon picking up that C of O, they noticed that they were issued the wrong C of O. Came back, and when they come back for the second C of O, it was determined, after the Planning Department spoke with the Fire Authority, that they didn't need a C of O, rather they needed a fire permit. So they filled out the fire permit, was under review. Tuesday evening, I was out and about, noticed that there was some equipment stored in the parking lot of Goodwill, and thought, hmm, that's an odd place to store some equipment outside of city limits. So when I came in in the morning, I contacted the police chief, reviewed the code, and the police chief has the authority to enforce that. So I asked the chief to go down and pam it a visit, have them come and see my office. We're the ones that issued the permit. When she came down that morning, she had... that's when she had disclosed that she's been working with the city for the last couple of weeks. So due to miscommunication, the proper paperwork wasn't filed and noticed until Tuesday, and that's when we realized that it needs council action before it can happen. Spoke to legal counsel, and so since we've already made a notice for a special meeting, it was appropriate to add this to the agenda. Seeking ratification, the amusement did open at 5:00. They do have the permit, and upon ratification of the council. So they are under the understanding that if it does not pass tonight, then we will move forward with shutting them down. If the council approves, then they'll move forward. They'll get a phone call from me as soon as we're done, saying you can proceed.
I was just going to say, I think these are always a little annoying when we find ourselves behind the eight ball, and we kind of want to have this tendency to want to tell them to shape up and all that stuff. But things happen. We understand that. I think they've got all their permissions, and I personally don't have a problem with it.
Yes.
My only comment was, did they get the fire inspection done?
Um...
Greg Rogers' memo says, "A file inspection of the carnival is required before opening by a member of the South Kitsap Fire Rescue Prevention." Since we know they opened, and their official application wasn't till yesterday, this is requiring that they request a fire inspection at least two days in advance of opening, and I'm just wondering if that's been done or not.
I don't have confirmation that it has, but I did speak to Greg Rogers, letting him know that this was moving forward, it was going to be council action. I told him the start time, so I'm assuming they've connected, but I can confirm that.
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
For clarification, the motion refers to it as South Kitsap Mall. I think it's Town Square Mall, and the application refers to Town Square Mall, so I'm not sure if that's...
That's a typo on my part. I apologize.
So it should be Town Square Mall?
Yes.
Any other questions?
And the second would agree to change it then.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the application, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Carries.
And just to hopefully ease the council's mind, I'll be working with the city attorney just to kind of review the code. We did notice that it hadn't been updated in some time, so we'll kind of review it and kind of update it and kind of do a little more public awareness to make sure that they know to contact the city clerk's office. I mean, it is on our website, but you know, somehow there's a disconnect, but we'll just make sure that our code is pretty clear.
Okay, thank you. Number Three, Presentation.
Council, Planning Commissioners, and citizens of Port Orchard, I'm here to introduce students from the University of Washington tonight who are going to give a presentation on the periodic update to the city's comprehensive plan. As you're aware, the city must conduct a periodic update to its comprehensive plan every eight years. And so we last did this in 2008, and in 2016, in June, we have to have an update completed. So in last year's budget process, I requested some funds to hire this graduate student class to assist in the public process of facilitating the visioning process and updates to the land use and housing elements of the plan. And over the last six months, I've worked with the eight students before you, and the professor and the TA, on an update to the comprehensive plan, and I'm really pleased with how things have turned out. I see a lot of the members of the public that are here tonight were involved in some of the visioning workshop meetings and open houses that were held. We held a number of focus groups and really sought to get as much public input as we possibly could. After reading through the final document, which has been handed out to you tonight, I read through it over the last couple of days, I really feel that the students have captured a lot of what the public was saying, and I see things in the report that I heard in meetings from the public, and I think they've done a good job of capturing the public's vision for Port Orchard and how they identify with Port Orchard. So I'm going to turn it over to them now for their presentation, but we'll have a question and answer with council member questions first, and then any questions from the public afterwards, once their presentation is complete. And I'd ask that you save your questions for the end of the presentation, and that way they can get... Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Mayor Mathis, council members, members of the Planning Commission and residents of Port Orchard. My name is Andrew Brick, and please allow me to introduce the team that has been working with the city on this project. Port Orchard native Scott Bonjukian, Jason Garnum, Monica Jo, Paul Kopka, Ross McFarland, Michael Ulmer, Stephen Veith, our instructor, Mr. Richard Seppeler, and our teaching assistant, Katie Heima. It has been our pleasure to work with the city on the launch of its 2016 comprehensive plan update. Tonight, we're delivering a first-touch presentation that will explain our process and introduce the product of our work, which consists of three major elements. The first is the plan's introduction, which lays out the major issues the city faces and establishes an overarching theme for the plan. The second is the land use element, the backbone of the comprehensive plan, which designates the proposed general distribution, locations, and extensive various land uses in the city. The third is the housing element, which ensures the vitality and character of established neighborhoods and proposes policies to accommodate growth and meet the housing needs of the community. We will also present suggestions for ways to move forward, answer your questions, and address your comments. We would like to start out by saying that from what we've seen of the city so far and what we've heard from the residents, we think that Port Orchard really is a special place in the Pacific Northwest, and that its residents are in a position to take the things that are great about the city and to make them truly excellent. While this presentation and our work products represent the best efforts... represent our best efforts to understand the dynamics of Port Orchard and to provide a plan to achieve the goals we've heard residents express, no one knows the city as well as its residents. Our part in this process is but a small one in updating the comprehensive plan, and we endeavor to pass the torch to the city tonight with this presentation and the plan we've delivered. As shown on this timeline, our process began with the review of the city's existing comprehensive plan and research into the conditions that presently exist in the city. This research revealed certain challenges the city is facing now and will likely face in the future. We presented these findings at a public meeting in early March and solicited feedback on what we believe for some of Port Orchard's most pressing issues. We took this information and developed some loose alternatives of the city's future and solicited further input from the community during last month's open house. Additionally, we met with a variety of stakeholders throughout the community to gather additional information and perspectives and Port Orchard's... on Port Orchard's challenges, opportunities, and the preferences of its residents. The draft sections of the plan we are submitting tonight reflect this information and present a way forward that we believe can put Port Orchard in a position to meet its challenges, seize its opportunities, and retain and enhance the aspects of the community that its residents hold most dear. It should be noted that the comprehensive plan update process will continue over the next 18 to 20 months, with multiple planned opportunities for public participation and further feedback. I'll briefly go over some of the major trends we identified in our research. A full accounting of these findings is contained within the initial conditions report, which is one of the appendices available for your review. As you can see from this graph, Port Orchard population is growing. Kitsap County allocated 8,235 of the county's projected new residents by 2035 to Port Orchard, and an additional 6,235 to the adjacent urban growth area. This represents a growth rate for the city proper of about 3% annually.
Thank you.
So this represents a growth rate for the city proper of about 3% annually, not including any potential future annexations. Port Orchard is also getting older, but this data is likely skewed by recent annexations. The average age of the United States as a whole, though, increased from 35 in 2000 to 37 in 2010 due to the aging of the baby boomer population. Accommodating the changing needs and desires of residents, as well as retaining community vitality and ensuring residents remain connected to the things they need, are challenges many communities across the country are facing. Port Orchard has significantly grown in size in recent years and may continue to do so with future annexations of urban growth area land. This produces multiple challenges, from retaining and growing community cohesiveness, to keeping residents connected to vital city services. But it also represents opportunities to invest in the future, to target valuable tax revenues to the areas where it is most needed, and to grow Port Orchard's economy and its importance to Kitsap County as a whole. These issues helped frame both our outreach to the public and our drafting of the plan presented here tonight. Our outreach efforts, which are detailed in an appendix to the plan, began in January with an initial meeting with the mayor and members of city staff. To gather input from the public, we conducted two citywide open house and public meeting events, and as mentioned previously, conducted targeted outreach with various stakeholders throughout the community. We also gathered data from an online survey. The major issues that emerged will be covered in detail in just a moment, but overall, we encountered a recurring theme during our engagement. The idea of making connections emerged from discussions with the mayor, council members, city staff, and residents of the city, as well as from our analysis of existing conditions. Some of the connections between these places and actors are strong, while others are loose or not as meaningful as they could be. For instance, strengthening connections between residents and the government, and making connections between neighborhoods, particularly in light of recent annexations, were brought forward. The draft plan aims to strengthen these connections, to help the community gel together to achieve its common goals. Furthermore, making connections between various elements of the comprehensive plan was an explicit goal of ours. The construct of dividing the plan into separate sections, while required by law, can lead to a lack of cohesiveness. But the plan needs to be a cohesive whole and needs to reflect the unified vision of the community. For this reason, we spent a fair amount of time and effort in crafting the plan's introduction, which establishes the common threads that weave themselves through the draft plan elements before you tonight, and that can guide the process of updating the remaining elements.
Thank you, Andrew.
As was mentioned, as part of our public outreach efforts, we conducted two online surveys to get feedback from the city about where they want the city to go in the future. This presentation is briefly about the latter survey because we had a much larger respondent base, and we had a lot more useful information from that one. So this survey was conducted from April to May, and the link to it was distributed via email, Facebook, and short link on flyers posted in downtown businesses. I'll be discussing a few of the key questions, and the full results are in one of the appendices in the plan. So one of the first... one of the questions we asked was how respondents found out about the survey. This was in order to find out how Port Orchard could reach out to its citizens in future public engagement settings. Two-thirds of respondents reported that they found the survey via social media, and when asked more specifically where they found that, a great majority found them via the unofficial Port Orchard Facebook page, which is different from the City of Government... City of Port Orchard Government Facebook page. So I think the takeaway here is that the city needs to get on the social media bandwidth a little more and push more online tools. In relation to our earlier work, we asked a couple of questions about what citizens believe Port Orchard's identity is. Most people identify the city as a small town and a bedroom community for commuters who work in other cities. And then when we asked what people think Port Orchard should be in the future, most want to remain a small town, but we're also interested in becoming a hub for social activities, like festivals and community groups, and tourist attraction, which is in line with what we've heard a lot during our other public outreach. The takeaway from this is that people are okay with change, but not drastic change. Then with transportation, although we didn't write about this, we had quite a few questions about it. We asked people what their mode of travel was for different types of activities. It's clear that most people drive to do all of their daily activities in Port Orchard, but there is a notable percentage of people who bike and walk for recreational purposes. Another question asked what people's top transportation problems were. The top three answers were road congestion, incomplete sidewalks and paths, and lack of bicycle infrastructure. Written comments included things like limited foot ferry hours, no bus service in Hummer quids, the need to widen Tremont and Beaufort, and some even suggested a small streetcar network. I think the takeaway here is that people want choices in how they get around. Similarly, the land use section had a lot of questions. A couple of the key ones here were asking people where they do their shopping. A little less than half said they actually do most of their shopping in Port Orchard. The other half mostly did the shopping in Gig Harbor and Silverdale, which isn't too surprising because we know there's a lot of retail presence there. And also, not surprisingly, when asked what type of industries and jobs Port Orchard should attract, a lot of them said that we need... Port Orchard needs more retail, and some also were interested in attracting high-tech and startups and business and professional services. The takeaway here is that people want local shopping opportunities and commercial services. When asked about housing, over 80% said their housing costs are affordable. One thing to remember is that the respondents of the survey did skew a little middle to upper class, so we didn't catch all of Port Orchard's different economic groups. When asked what type of new housing people would like to see, a lot of people responded that they would like to see single-family homes and neighborhoods in keeping with the city's current character, but some were also interested in seeing mixed-use multifamily development, like residences mixed with commercial services. This takeaway... the takeaway of this is, coming into our next question about growth strategy, when asked where new jobs and populations should go, over half of respondents said that concentrated growth in clusters, including the downtown, would be preferable. The takeaway is that this supports our center strategy, which we'll be going into in a few minutes.
Good evening. I'm Jay, and I'm going to give a summary of the findings from our work with the Port Orchard community. After four months of analysis and input from city leaders and residents, we've distilled what we've heard into four key themes that form the foundation of the goals, principles, and recommendations that are in this plan. First, Port Orchard's downtown waterfront are key assets for the community, and people of Port Orchard have a tremendous desire to revitalize these areas and strengthen their connections to them. Second, Port Orchard's residents hope to preserve their... Port Orchard's identity, its small-town character, into the future. Third, we heard from city leaders and residents alike that the bridges between the people and their government should be strengthened, that greater community involvement in the planning process is desired by both city hall and the public. Fourth, we learned that Port Orchard, like so many communities, is facing the increasingly difficult challenge of meeting its infrastructure and service needs of a growing and changing population within the constraints of limited capital resources. Downtown revitalization is the default topic of conversation... of almost any conversation about Port Orchard's future. Residents nearly unanimously express a desire for a downtown that is more lively and attractive than it is today and retains its historic character. Further, residents recognize that the city's waterfront is one of its key assets for attracting people and business to the city. An overview of prior plans for redevelopment dating from the early 1980s and continuing through the development of the downtown overlay district in the 2008 comprehensive plan confirms that the vitality of these areas is critical to Port Orchard's identity and is a key issue in mobilizing the public in city planning. Some of Port Orchard's greatest opportunities and challenges lay in utilizing these assets to strengthen the city's identity and to strengthen people's connections to these In addition to the importance of the downtown waterfront, we also heard that residents and visitors alike to Port Orchard highly value the city's scenic natural setting and its proximity to other regional employment and urban areas. Within this context, residents highly enjoy Port Orchard's quiet residential character and its strong community spirit. Mindful that Port Orchard is certain to grow and change, people express a deep concern that the community retain its friendly, small-town feel into the future. City leaders recognize the strong sense of pride and community spirit that the people have for their city. There's a sincere desire to harness the sense of community and engage more people in the planning process. Further, city leaders wish to see better attendance at public meetings and hearings and to build more support for decisions that are made concerning Port Orchard's future. Further, concerned citizens constrained by the demands of busy lives would appreciate and benefit from community communication and engagement strategies that inform and involve them in new and creative ways. Strengthening the bridges between the citizens and their government is of critical importance to the city. It ensures sound reasoning behind decisions. It encourages popular support for plans and projects. It informs both residents and leaders of the challenges and opportunities facing the city. And lastly, it promotes the many successes and achievements that have and will occur in Port Orchard. Lastly, through the analysis that we did while compiling our initial conditions report and as informed by city leaders, we've learned that Port Orchard is facing the increasingly difficult challenge of maintaining levels of service for its critical infrastructure and community services within the constraints of finite financial resources. Maintenance, upgrades, and expansion of infrastructure such as roads and sewers, and provision of services for a growing and changing population will be a significant challenge in the years to come. Thus, there's a growing need to target use of these limited resources on infrastructure and service investments that respond to the anticipated growth by maximizing efficiency and minimizing per capita costs. Further, the city needs to meet its future needs in a manner that promotes and retains its existing character that is so strongly valued by the community.
Thank you, Jay. So far, you've kind of heard the background and the process and the steps that we have taken to reach the point where we are this evening, and in building that body of knowledge and that understanding of the community, and also steps moving forward. So now Monica and I will take you through the document that is before you here this evening, and our recommendations based on what we have heard. So the document that is in front of you contains the main elements that we were tasked with working on over these past six months, which are the introduction, land use, and housing chapters. Now, as you can see here in this diagram, ultimately, the comp plan or the comprehensive plan, once it is fully developed or fully updated, will include many more elements than those, including capital facilities, parks, utilities, transportation, natural systems. And all of these relate back to land use and ultimately to the vision that has been established. And through that, we feel that the connections theme helps to tie all those together, and also, as you can see, the center's strategy tied with connections begins to be used as a tool that can potentially inform land use moving forward. Now, within the document, the introduction lays out the vision and kind of the background on community outreach, and then within land use and housing are enumerated goals based on what has been heard of the community vision, and then specific policies that can be used to achieve those In addition, as a part of this document, there are some new components and approach that have been used, again, touching on connections, just a large theme and just a broad message that we have heard throughout this process and we feel is valuable, not only in connecting the elements of the comp plan, but also in connecting Port Orchard and the vision that exists. Also, the center's strategy and citizen engagement strategy, those are two components that we developed in addition to the primary elements to help inform the document. And Monica will go into greater detail about what the center's strategy and the citizen engagement strategy entail. And then finally, you'll notice throughout the document, our issue in focus boxes. What those are is they simply take some key elements and detail them further. So again, as we look at this larger theme of connections, we felt it was valuable to point out some of the ways in which these can play out in the city. Of course, this is by no means an exhaustive list. We believe that the theme and meaning of connection continue to evolve and affect many different areas of the city. But some of the messages that we've heard is that it's important to connect individual neighborhoods to the greater city. Port Orchard is made up of a number of different neighborhoods with different characters and different people, and we've heard that they may be a bit disjointed and that there is a potential to connect them to the greater image that is Port Orchard. Connecting people to the waterfront, we've... Connecting people to the waterfront, we've consistently heard that there is a desire for a stronger use of the water in recreation and in commerce and just in general, capitalizing on the opportunity that exists there to connect citizens with the water as a resource. Along with that, as you've heard, downtown has been a consistent theme, connecting people to downtown in order to engage with businesses and shops there, contribute to a greater vitality downtown. And then, related to those, relating the downtown and the waterfront themselves, because of the close proximity, downtown and the waterfront have an opportunity to connect well and to foster and create a more cohesive core and whole for the city. Connecting people via land use choices that encourage meaningful reaction or interactions. And what we mean by that is, for instance, if you build housing that's close to shops and restaurants, maybe citizens have the potential to walk to those shops and encounter one another on the street and have those sorts of chants, conversations, and that build that greater sense of community and connection. Connecting separate areas of the city with a variety of transportation options, we feel is important. As Scott mentioned earlier in the survey, that desire for being able to walk, bike, just in addition to the car, just having those options and that freedom of choice in how to get about the city. With Port Orchard having a long and important history, we feel that the built environment can be better connected to people through that history. And so whether it's downtown or in other portions of the city, connecting to that historic character through the architecture. Similarly to connecting to the waterfront, connecting to the regional trail network, again, the idea of recreation, taking advantage of the beauty and the natural resources that exist here within the city. Also, along those lines, parks. The city of Port Orchard has a number of parks, but they are fairly separated and they could be better connected not only to the homes that are nearby to those parks, but also better connected to each other to form a larger green space network for the city. And then finally, the last two points, better connecting citizens and government and business and government. We have heard both from citizens, the desire for stronger engagement with the government process, and also from you all and from, from city staff, the ability to just better connect with citizens. So that way, there's a cohesive vision and, and movement forward. And also with businesses, we recognize that there is a unique partnership and opportunity that can exist when government and business catch hold of the vision and are able to connect to further that moving forward.
Thank you, Ross. Okay, so I'm about to introduce the center strategy and the civic engagement strategy, and these are components that we worked on outside of the chapters that we were updating. So based on what we heard from citizens at our public meetings and in our focus groups, we recommend implementing a strategy for designating centers in Port Orchard. The center strategy is derived from the Kitsap Countywide Planning Policies, which outline four different types of centers in the cities of Kitsap County. The intention of these centers is to provide a focus for population growth and resource allocation. Port Orchard already has three designated centers under the county, but the city could take this strategy further and designate centers in areas that are already experiencing high levels of activity. As we previously mentioned, Port Orchard will need to account for future directed growth in the area, and we found that centers seem to be the best strategy to account for this. For this plan, we have developed a framework for designating these centers. This is based on the fact that recent annexations have enlarged the city boundaries, so certain neighborhoods may not have access to the older city centers such as the historic downtown and the South Kitsap Mall. The strategy designates additional city centers that could provide hubs of activity for those new neighborhoods and allows access to the resources, housing, and employment that they may need. So, designating centers is a land use technique that can be used to manage and define future growth and to keep growth harmonious with the community plans. It can be thought of as a priority growth district, where the city can concentrate growth to help preserve the condition of the environment. Enacting the center strategy can enhance the larger community as it benefits the entire city. And there are many advantages to designating centers. Beginning with efficiency, the center strategy could improve efficiency by making housing, infrastructure, and business development concurrent. Concurrent helps to concentrate growth and to allocate resources effectively so that no time or money is wasted. The centers could also concentrate growth in a particular area of the city, which could provide Port Orchard with the opportunity to retain the large amount of open space that the city already has. And in addition, the opportunity to retain the community character by allowing other areas to remain the way that they are. In addition, centers could also allow compact spaces of activity and provide concentrated housing and employment opportunities. This could increase the chances for residents to live and work in the same area and thus allow a shorter commute time to work. Centers can also address housing issues because concentrated population growth can be supported by a variety of housing types and also create the potential for more affordable housing opportunities. And lastly, in keeping with our connections theme, centers could allow a stronger connection to parks and open space, and that is actually one of the criteria that we have outlined for potential areas that could be centers. So here's our criteria for designating centers, and this includes areas that have fast, frequent, and reliable transit service, areas that have opportunities for redevelopment due to a substantial amount of vacant or underutilized land, areas that have existing development patterns that would support a center so that they can grow with minor changes and public investment, areas that allow for a mix of densities and non-residential activities that support residential use, areas that have opportunities to be connected by bicycle and/or pedestrian facilities to adjacent areas and nearby public amenities. In addition, our criteria looks at places that are near the principal arterial network for easy auto access and delivery of goods, areas that are near open space that is available for public use, or opportunities that exist to provide public open space in the future. And lastly, areas that are in established assisting living facilities to provide easy access for those who may not be able to drive anymore. So the city may consider looking at this criteria and maybe see what areas of Port Orchard would fit. And the next step after that would be to conduct a review process and gain support on this idea so that it can actually be implemented. And we tested out this idea of centers at our open house event on May 8th, and we received a lot of great and positive feedback from Port Orchard citizens, business owners, homeowners, and even city staff. We strongly recommend adopting this strategy to help create hubs of activity and achieve the growth goals required by the county. So in addition to the center strategy, we have also developed a civic engagement strategy as well. This strategy is derived from the public participant, public participation methods that we used to inform the policies in the plan. Residents expressed feeling disconnected from the planning process. Thus, we have outlined goals that this plan could help accomplish. These include: creating an informed citizenry that has knowledge of the planning process; fostering a diverse and inclusive participation in local government as many groups may be underrepresented in the planning process; demonstrating transparency in the planning process so that citizens are aware of the activities of the local government; and creating observable results so that citizens can see actual progress with planning activities. So the civic engagement strategy outlines particular approaches for achieving these goals to obtain a comprehensive involvement of Port Orchard citizens in the planning process. And these strategies encourage active approaches to gaining public participation combined with traditional planning methods. These active approaches include conducting one-on-one stakeholder meetings, like we did with Coffee Oasis and the public market business owners, and meeting with community groups such as the South Kitsap County School District and the Rotary Club. In the future, the strategy recommends exploring online programs such as MindMixer, Facebook, and TextIsIn. MindMixer is an online platform that acts sort of as a virtual town hall, where citizens in the city can discuss issues and share ideas and even track progress on different planning activities. TextIsIn is a civic dialogue platform where the city can pose questions on posters and in public places, and then citizens can respond via text message. These online tools, combined with more common tools such as Facebook and Twitter, can help the city reach out to more citizens and gain more instant and direct feedback. In addition, as we previously mentioned, Port Orchard is now made up of multiple neighborhoods due to annexations. These neighborhoods each have their own character and needs, and one idea that is outlined in the civic engagement strategy is to have a representative neighborhood council. This is one idea that could bring the interests of different neighborhoods together so that they feel that their concerns are being heard and addressed. So these strategies can be combined with more traditional methods such as open houses and public meetings to achieve a comprehensive civic engagement so that citizens of Port Orchard can feel connected to the planning process.
Thank you, Monica. So moving forward, if our team had more time to work with the city, we would have done some more work on transportation planning. Specifically, we would have liked to have done a downtown parking study, since you've heard that is an issue, a recurring issue. And also, we would have looked into the Safe Routes to School program, which is run at the federal level, and it helps kids walk and bike to school in a safe manner. We also would have done more targeted outreach. We didn't hear a lot from youth, Navy personnel, or low-income people. But otherwise, over the next two years, the next steps are for the planning staff to draft the other elements of the plan, which, as mentioned, include utilities, transportation, parks, et cetera, hold multiple public hearings, do some studies, and then in 20, early 2016, the city council will adopt the, the new plan or the updated plan. So in conclusion, we think that Port Orchard's assets ensure that it will retain a high quality of life for the years to come. People are continuing to live and do business here because of the city's great environmental, economic, and social aspects. As a Port Orchard native, I believe that making connection to, between people, government, business, and everything else will help make a good city a great city. Thank you. And I believe now we have time for questions and comments from the council.
Thank you very much. Counsel.
Nice job.
Yeah, that is a nice job. I guess I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Charles.
In your, scoping out the city for better words and looking at the assets we have and then, you know, God-given vistas and mountains and different things, did you get a feeling for the city as it's laid out now and how it might be laid out in the future? Like, we've got a lot of old buildings and revitalization is coming, and how that revitalization takes place and how those buildings interact, say, with the, as you mentioned earlier, a potential future waterfront plan? Did you, any of you get a kind of a vision of looking at what we have now and then thinking what, maybe what it could be?
I believe that for us, that's why we wanted to explore the center strategy, because we felt that that would help to capitalize on what is here now. It would be important not to just designate centers willy-nilly, just anywhere in the city, but recognize that, you know, places like downtown or certain shopping centers, or certain places in the city that are already hubs of activity have the potential to serve as those new centers. So still, like you were saying, taking advantage of the structure that is here now, but recognizing that there is that potential for redevelopment. And we feel that centers is one approach that could be adopted to address that.
You, you mentioned, one of you mentioned, community outreach groups for, for the smaller communities within the larger city. Have you guys dealt with that very much in so far in, in any other places or cities?
Do you mean personally, have any of us had experience?
Yeah, have you had any experience with that, how that would work and what that would look like? These, these individual little smaller communities would just pick their representatives and, and I'm not sure how it would be organized. Is there anybody that has any ideas?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few.
Okay, all right.
I'm Rick Setler, I'm the instructor, and, and I could say, there have been models of doing a focus, sort of like charrettes or workshops, where you bring folks together. It's not looked and proposed to establish a legislative body as much as to get a group together that's representative by invitation from time to time and in certain areas, to use as a chance to just discuss issues that are pressing and get responses to things that are done. These kind of low-key focus group kind of meetings tend to be relatively apolitical, can be much more on point because you're dealing with a limited area of the city, tend to be fairly informal, but also tend to be very informative. And a number of communities have used them. What we found is often folks, it's, as you can imagine, it often is intimidating, come down to stand at a podium and to raise a concern. It's much more engaging to have 12 or 15 people around a table with a facilitated discussion. There's not an agenda as much as to learn what the concerns are and talk about what's being proposed. So we can give you some references for other communities that have established kind of informal network. They're scheduled, they're by invitation, and they have found traction in getting some good viewpoints voiced. It's for you to determine where those areas are with your staff and.
Well, we might use in conjunction with commercial, littler's, commercial areas, you know, maybe that would be a logical demographic or something. But we still have a few more, uh, public meetings, so we could maybe work on that a little bit. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
I would just like to echo Mr. Paton's comments. Good job, thank you, this is very impressive.
I would like to.
I'm bored of reading and scanning and as you guys were talking and.
They always want us, they always want us to ask questions before we've really got into the material.
I have one question.
Okay, Mr. Cartwright.
Volume two is an attached, are we gonna get that sometime soon?
Well, you're right ahead.
Volume two of the appendices, I believe, is about 200 pages long. So to save a few trees, we thought we'd give it to you digitally and you'll have it all at your disposal.
That works great, thank you.
I would like, if we, if time permits, and I think we, we were scheduled for, till nine, weren't we? Wasn't that, can, I would like to open it up to, to the citizens and see if they have any comments at this time. Yes, please. Okay, I'll tell you what we'll do, let's, let's get the hand mic and if you would wait until the mic gets here, we could hear you better and you're.
So my name is Chuan Ponjukian. This is my son Scott. Go Huskies. But my question is, Scott worked on a real interesting project when he was an intern, I don't know, a few years ago before Nick came on. And he took that whole Kmart building that's been abandoned and redesigned it into condominiums with a place for the residents or maybe future residents to have. It was very green, they could have their own gardens. And I was ever wondering if the council, when you have an issue like that with, you know, commercial space that's now emptied, and I understand that SARS has gone out too, what do, does it ever come up in discussion, maybe I'm not here for council meetings, but what does the city ever, you know, envision for these types of land use, these, these abandoned businesses? Because right now, when I first came to Port Orchard, 26 years ago, it was really cool, I loved this place, and, but we had the Kmart, and it's, looks pretty bad right now, I mean, if, so my question to you is, do you ever plan on what you're gonna do with these, this commercial space?
Well, it's private property, so.
Oh, is it?
To a degree, government can't make edicts about private property, I mean, that's always been my position. We want to encourage anybody that has a legitimate business to come to Port Orchard. I think every single person up here would be, go an extra mile to talk to somebody that might have a business that could.
Okay, well, having said that, I don't mean to interrupt, but having said that, do you promote the sale or, it's private property, right, but do you ever communicate with the, the owner or the developers or to sell that land or is it out of your hands?
No, I haven't, I haven't myself.
Okay, so it's basically out of your hands?
I'm not speaking for the council though, yes.
Well, you know, the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance, which is active throughout our county, is well aware of that space, because when we're trying to attract new business and new development in the county and in the various cities, they're, they've inventoried what we have and they are well aware of that space and have talked about it for different projects, nothing. projects. Nothing has come to fruition, but it's not like we're not aware of it, it's not like it's not out there for new folks coming to town. So, you know, as the mayor said, it is private, but that doesn't mean we're not aware of it.
Okay, and this, I think I only get three minutes, but I have one more question for you.
I don't know, we have the three-minute rule tonight.
Oh, do you? Well, it's in here.
As long as you're not plowing the same ground twice, I think you've got the...
I cut the wrong way?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm Livin' in McCormick Woods, and I just understand that, it's a little slightly different, but a little thing with land use is, since the, a lot of people have gotten marijuana permits to grow, and apparently it's on Oak Clifton Road. And I just, maybe I didn't get the memo, but what is, what are you guys thinking for to allow these people to grow this marijuana, even if medical, I don't care? And, is it across from Juby or what? Because I'm just kind of really disturbed about this. Can you imagine? I mean, it's kind of like, you know, I understand the pros and cons of the medical marijuana and the state Washington and the federal laws, but what is your reasoning on this?
That's, you know, that probably is not a fair question to answer tonight, because I don't think anybody up here has thought about that for you tonight. I'm having a town hall meeting on the 12th, and I've had several people ask similar questions to what you just asked about. And so, the town hall meeting I'm having starts at 6:30 in this very room, and one of the subjects I said we might talk about is marijuana. And we can talk about it in any way, shape, or form, because at the town hall meeting, we sit in a circle and we pass the mic around, so there'll be a chance to make comments like that, and then maybe to, you know, anybody could say what they think also. Probably that'd be the better venue than right now, because we didn't really have any, this on our agenda at all today.
Well, I just noticed in the Port Orchard Independent that they are going to be allowing these shops on, was it Bethel? I think Nick mentioned his name was there, Bethel and somewhere in Sedgwick? Is this really legal? I mean, I know you have to be within 1,000 feet from a school or anything, but really? I mean, we're going to be called Pot Orchard? I mean, I have an issue with this.
I think, I think you need to come on the 12th.
I think so too, but I'm just giving you a preview.
We'll be live and be on our website, and yeah, that's the kind of comments and discussion we want to have. Is that what we really want?
Yeah, is what we want, because really, Port Orchard is awesome, I know we've got some issues, but this is a great place. I know people, the ones that get across the bridge, they love this place, they, but, you know, I'm sorry, you know?
Well, I think we better just concentrate on questions to the...
Comp Plan.
To the Comp Plan and to the U folks tonight.
Well, it does, because it has a lot to do with land use, and you're talking about issues with the image of Port Orchard. I think this is relevant, but I'll see you on the 12th.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know that I need to introduce myself, but, because I'm fairly well-known, but it's Bill Palmer. I had a couple of questions, but first I'd like to commend the students for the work that they did. I think it's going to prove valuable. I'll be anxious to read your document in more detail. There are a couple of things that came to mind during your presentation. I don't know if Ron Casperson is still an active professor, but in this community, he's, should be fairly well-known, because back in the 80s, he did a design study for the downtown area, and I think he updated it in the 90s, according to my recollection. He also happens to be a classmate of mine, so I'm somewhat aware of things that he did in the past. And it brings up the issue of documents that have been prepared in the past and how they play into current planning programs. And some of the recommendations that Ron made, I think, still have value and represent something that the city of Port Orchard is still willing to consider. The next comment has to do with a particular bugaboo of mine, because you mentioned the countywide planning policies. And this is, I wrote a very extensive critique of those countywide planning policies in 2012, and County Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council went ahead to adopt them and made virtually no changes. My bugaboo is that it seems that people that write policies don't know how to do it. And those policies, the countywide planning policies, are still plagued with problems. I happened to have had conversation recently with the Director for the Department of Community Development, Kitsap County, and they're thinking about how they're going to update the countywide plan, which has to be updated by 2016, and I asked him directly if he was going to include countywide planning policies in their plan. And his response was, no, they weren't, which rather surprised me for a lot of reasons, one of which relates to the Growth Management Act. But I'm interested in the recommendation that City of Port Orchard might be including them at some juncture in your comprehensive plan. And if they're taken in literally, you will find me objecting to them because of the way they're written and the subject matter they address that, now in my personal opinion, don't think are applicable to Port Orchard or Kitsap County for that matter. At any rate, I commend your effort, and I'll be looking, very much looking forward to reading your report.
I think we will have the appendices, the 200 pages electronically on our website, probably...
Tomorrow.
Okay, I was going to say next week, first of next week, but tomorrow morning it is, I guess, okay.
It's early in advance of this week, but it's Monday.
Okay. Barring any glitches, but it will be very soon. Tomorrow, ideally, Monday, you know, if there's something comes up, but, so they'll be there, they'll be available. I too want to thank you guys for all of your, I made it to most of the meetings, at least at the beginning of a couple, and then I added other things and then came back. I want to applaud your efforts, especially when you went downtown to the market. They went downtown and spent about three hours, three or four hours, at a booth at the public market, the farmer's market, actually. And so, you went that extra mile to get some data for your project. We didn't maybe have as good a turnout the first meeting, so you went down and asked people, and I really give you a lot of credit for doing that, I appreciate that. I think this is going to make city's comp plan really stand out, with a lot of other small cities being told, well, you might have done a public process like Port Orchard did, you know? Yeah, so I'm pretty sure, and we'll give you credit for that, to a large degree, because of what you've done here. So, thank you very much. Members of public, any other? Oh, yep, you've got it, okay.
Well, my name's Alyssa Whittleton, and since I already had the mic, my question was just answered, because I wanted to make sure it was available electronically, thank you for that, but I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I thought you guys did an awesome job, and you really listened and put it together in a cohesive way, and thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Kirsten. I'm with Reed Real Estate in Port Orchard, I'm a new agent, and I had one thing, one suggestion about advertising for the comprehensive plan. We do have the Fathoms of Fun coming up, and I know, like, I'm new to real estate, but the one thing I've learned is getting your bu, like, that bug in somebody's ear, you know, really sticking with somebody. And I know it's like when I've talked to my friends that are a little bit younger, you know, and my age, they have no idea about this stuff. And I'm like, well, go online and fill out the survey, you know, it's really important, everybody wants to see Port Orchard grow. And I mean, me, starting my family and getting married here, I want to see, you know, a place where my kids can grow up, and all of my friends that are my age, you know, all have little kids, and they really want to see Port Orchard rise up a little bit more. And I think, you know, it's like if we did the Fathoms of Fun, you know, did a nice, like, booth where, with kid stuff, and, you know, bring your kids over here, and that's going to bring young families over, and that's going to get the people that, you know, will be growing up, the next generation in this city, you know? And also, we are holding an after-hours event for the Chamber of Commerce on the 26th at Reed Real Estate, and if somebody wanted to come and talk to the local businesses, maybe give us a handout, I'd be more than welcome to, you know, get a little bit more involved, so. And you guys did really great, that was really awesome, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You know, and funny, you should mention food fun and festivals, or did you? I mentioned it, didn't I? Food fun and festivals, Fort Orchard's having a, yeah, Fort Orchard actually on Saturday is getting, is having an art walk. We've got four bands or groups spread out around town, and it starts at 3:00. And of course, we have the farmer's market that starts at 10:00, 10:00 or 11:00, and then we have the public market, which just opened here about a month ago. So, lots of things happening on Saturday in downtown Port Orchard. Bring your children, come down. There isn't a time that I don't see 50 to 100 youngsters playing at Marina Park. It's a beautiful park, and couldn't be a better setting than PSNS in the background, so, yeah, please come.
I was wondering, you've talked about the different areas for the growth in existing places, could you list some of the places that you've identified as strategic centers for...
So, three different areas, aside from the three that were designated by the county as centers, were Bethel and Lund, Bethel and Sedgwick, and Sidney and Sedgwick, and these are just some areas that already have a lot of activity. And we're encouraging further consideration into them, but we're not saying that those have to be. That's why we developed the criteria, so there could be further research into looking at the whole city and seeing where some areas might fit this criteria, so.
And what, are they, those three the same as the county?
No, the three in the county are the downtown, the South Kitsap Mall, and then the Tremont Community Services, so, yeah.
And in the county documented, it is called the South Kitsap Mall incorrectly, I think, because it's the old town center.
It used to be the South Kitsap Mall.
Yeah, a lot of us just refer to that as Town Center now, Town Center Mall.
So, in your report, there's six centers, three from the recommended by the county, and three recommended by the...
Yeah, and at the staff level, in our analysis, I think we've probably identified about 10 total candidates in the city that we think ought to be explored at some point, so we'll be discussing that at the Planning Commission in the future, I believe.
I have one critique here, as I'm flipping through it, on page 25, just your colors. You know, the city as a whole versus the urban growth area, it's tough to distinguish your two colors there. If you could grab a different color for maybe the urban growth area versus the city, it'd be easier to read them out.
Page 225.
2-25.
We can fix that.
If you're colorblind, probably what's all the same too.
Is that my problem?
We have an issue between what it looked like on the screen and what they were seeing out.
Everybody knows that.
I have a question for, oh, sorry, I think Fred, the other Fred did first.
Fred, DP, South Kitsap. They've done a great job, I think, in doing their homework there. I'm sitting here thinking to myself, one of the aspects that seems to be lacking in a lot of the comprehensive planning is how to implement. It's always easy to get it into conceptual form or theoretic form, but getting it into practice is another issue. I think it would be nice if possibly you could get this young, bright set of minds here, who have a new set of glasses, to maybe look into the possibility of what kind of incentives could be used in making this to occur, such as grants, all the different avenues that we currently use, but to have their introspective view of it would be, I think, a kind of an aspect no other comprehensive plan has really put forth on this thing. And since they are as studious, obviously, as you can tell by the results as they are, it would be a good opportunity for the council and the community to possibly look into, how do we make it work? Which has always been the lacking component to all these comprehensive plans. East Bramerton just got pulled back, Bethel Corridor Plan is defunct. And so, putting that aspect into it would be a suggestion, I think, might bring a lot of this to real world.
If you want to look at the public-private partnership, and I did hear you talk about that, do a little research on how Silverdale evolved, because it wouldn't have happened, it wouldn't be the center that it is today if it were not for the public-private partnership that took place back in the early, late 70s and early 80s. And also, look at the Ridgestop development, because that took place through a master plan process. And there was definite public-private partnership involved in that. And that is a model for how things could be done, but too often aren't.
I would also like to comment on the initial comment there, and I think the students made a good point about making sure that the, there's consistency within the comprehensive plan, that things start with the vision, they flow to the land use element, and then all of these other units, all these other elements are connected to sort of the overarching vision. And I think specifically, when you talk about utilities and transportation and how the money is spent for those types of infrastructure, that's going to be one of the main things that drives the development that would or would not be consistent with your plan. So ultimately, it's really important to connect those things and ensure that as we develop those other elements, that they fall in line with the vision that's been started and what the citizens have told us, and also to be looking at budgeting, and this is something that, as cities get bigger, they do more, is doing six-year capital improvement programs so that you actually are following through with transportation investment that really helps you achieve your goals. And so, that's one of the things Mark has been, Mark Dorsey has been working on, stormwater comprehensive plans, water system plans, sewer system plans, and bringing those things all together and trying to make all of our documents sort of cohesive is going to really help us achieve this vision, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Chang, and then...
I have a question for all of you who worked on this, to see, what was your perception of the city when you first came and when you finished the draft? And would any of you consider living, staying and living here?
Well, I'll just, we can just start off with, through me, and then go over. So, my initial thoughts about the city when I first came was, I kept getting the sense that there was this sort of disconnection and lack of community involvement, but the more that I worked in the community, and I was involved with a lot of the focus groups and a lot of the one-on-one meetings, I realized that a lot of the citizens in Port Orchard, they are involved in their community. A lot of people are in different clubs and different organizations and everything, it's just bridging that gap between that sort of community involvement and then getting involved with the local government. That was something that we really wanted to emphasize, just sort of bringing that spirit of being, of caring about the community, but to that level of caring about the local government and what, they had a role in everything. Oh, and as far as living here, maybe in the future, to raise children and everything, but as far as my, my young 20-something-year-old interests are, I, yeah. but as far as my, my young 20-something-year-old interests are, I, yeah, you guys can understand that.
I sense boring. On nothing. Okay.
Do we all feel like we should answer this, or?
If you feel like, whatever one feels like answers.
If you feel like, I would like to hear what you have to say.
I'm from northern New England and have spent most of my life in towns that aren't that different from Port Orchard, so I feel very at home here. And I also, I am really loving living in Seattle, but I do see myself eventually returning to live in a community probably not that different from Port Orchard. So it seems like a great place to me.
I grew up here. Can I take a pass? But just to quickly answer the question, I think I would if I was to come back to raise a family, but I would also have to combine that with employment and entertainment, and those kind of activity opportunities would be, those are important to me.
Yeah, so I first got to Port Orchard on the foot ferry, and the first thing that I thought was that it was a shame that a parking lot dominated the waterfront. I also didn't really get the, get that much of a small-town feel, just because I didn't have that much exposure, but getting out into other areas of the town, I do get that feeling. And really, just spending more time, I think, in downtown, it kind of grew on me a little I like quiet places. I'm naturally introverted, so I could see myself coming to a place like Port Orchard, even Port Orchard, just because it's very well-connected to Seattle. And I think that's, that's kind of the kind of life that I like, is being a little bit out of the big city, but have access to it so I can go to it. So I think that's a real strength that Port Orchard has and might be able to market to new residents.
Mr. Clausen, you had your hand up a minute ago.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment in regards to Nick's comment about making sure we tie all these different elements together and we get behind the capital plan and support it, things of that nature. And as it relates to transportation, I just wanted to introduce Ed. Raise your hand if you could. Ed is an employee of Kitsap Transit, and he's our transportation land use planner, who was hired primarily to work with the various jurisdictions, the cities and the county, as all of the different jurisdictions go forward and update their comp plans. So Nick, right behind you, is an asset for you to help and
He's already.
But, and Nick will be working with that. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that KRCC started a process last year, this year, I guess, with doing a countywide multi-mobility transportation plan. And we're actually going to take that, we as Kitsap Transit is actually going to take that over and take it to the next phase in 2015. So I think there's a lot of good work that's going on all around the county that I think we're all going to benefit by, and I commend your comments, Nick, because I think it's critical that we make sure that not just within our plan, but our plan is also connected with the rest of the community, because things like connection to Seattle, you know, those are all elements that affect multiple jurisdictions. So I think it's a good time.
Oh, who's got the?
George in the back.
Oh, yeah, somebody.
That's George.
Or Red.
Thank you. My name is George Larson. I live up on Farragut Avenue. My wife and I were on a road trip for a month, got home, and there was a survey on our email that, and I'm assuming it must, it sounds an awful lot like it was what you guys did. And one of the points that you were making was, you know, the connection between the community and the planners and, and I took considerable amount of time and filled it out, and I got no response in terms of, did anybody get it, let alone read it? I have no idea. So I think it would be good, you know, if somebody sends something, at least say, you know, got it, thank you. So I'm assuming when I hit send, it went to, must have gone to somebody. And, but, you know, that's, that's part of closing the loop on the communication. By the way, thank you for what you're doing. That's great.
So I think all, in the appendix, which will be online tomorrow, you're actually going to be able to go in and see all of the written responses, so you might see some writing that looks like yours. So you can double-check.
Nick, I think, one more hand up over here.
In your presentation, you were talking about the connections with the parks, and I was wondering, how have other communities implemented, you know, maybe that are a little bit ahead of us and have, I don't use the parks much, but I don't know much about the parks here, so I'm just wondering how, I know that you want them close to your centers, but how do you get the, how have other places made it where people start using them more? Or have they been implemented?
I would say one key thing that helps to increase park usages, when you increase the amount of users that live in immediate adjacency to a park, often if you have to drive a considerable distance, or it's difficult to park, or it's difficult to walk or access that park, people won't use it. So in a number of cities, I think that you'll, you can see where either housing or retail might abut the edge of the park to where the park has a potential to maybe even become a bit of a gathering space around the nodes that's built there. I think that's also the, part of the intent of the center strategy, is that, say, if there's a center located next to a park and you find more people and more restaurants and more shops that are built immediately adjacent to that, then you have that flow and that of users between those. In addition, within speaking to connecting the overall park system, possibly building more trails to connect the different parks that exist in the city, or trails to directly connect neighborhoods to parks that are nearby.
Yeah, again, you guys did such an awesome job, so really, I know you put a lot of effort into it, but I do have a question. I wasn't really sure, with the projected population growth, I really need to know, would like to know, how are our schools handling these, you know, the influxes? I know that these schools are getting pretty crowded. I think there is, was a proposed high school on Old Clifton Road. I think the city might have bought the land, but no, because I understand our high school is like the most populated, I don't know, west of the Mississippi or something, but did I miss this point? Did you guys, did you guys have any idea on schools and what the city, what the city could do to help with this projected population growth?
I can actually speak to that, because I got a public notice in the mail this week from the school district that they have posted a SEPA decision on their updated capital facilities plan, and so they've just updated their plan. And yes, they do own property off of Old Clifton Road for a future high school, and I think that's probably at least 10 years away. But I, you know, they talk about it regularly in our meetings. But I would encourage you to track down a copy of their new capital facilities plan, because it has a ton of information about how they're preparing for growing class sizes and all things to do with providing the space that is needed for learning and
Is that on the website somewhere?
On their website. I have a physical copy.
Yeah, it's not, it's not something the city gets involved in the schools. It's South Kitsap School District, yeah. And that, that's, that takes, you know, covers all of South Kitsap, cities, county, and everything. So that's
To comment on, I'm sorry, mayor.
No.
Just to comment on the high school. That has been brought up in the past, and the voters have voted the bond down. So it's up to the voters when they vote for the school district.
I don't know how long this city has had the property for the new high school.
We don't have the property.
The school district does.
School district owns that property.
Do you guys have a cover area?
Exactly. We're not, we're not even associated with the South Kitsap School District.
Clearly not.
Yeah. But at the next town hall meeting, if you'd like to come and make comments about schools, you can do that, too. Well, you know, we, number five here is citizens' comments, and I think, does any citizens have any additional comments? Last chance. Okay, Nick, what, anything for the good of the order, other than just our thank-yous for each one of you? And by, this isn't by any means all of you, because I remember there was at least another eight or 10 that were also working on this project, so.
Well, yeah, I have nothing further. I think you will see in your council packets for next Tuesday, there is going to be a discussion on centers, and so we'll continue that discussion. So I encourage you to look at the plan over the weekend and consider that, and as you look at the materials in your packet. But I think I'd just like to thank everybody for turning out tonight and for making this a, an excellent process. And I've worked with the University of Washington now on three of these types of projects, once as a student and then twice as a client here and previously in Eatonville. And I think it keeps getting better every year as I get more experience in helping manage the project, but, but this group has put out the highest quality work that I've seen from any of the students. And no disrespect to Katie, who was in the
I just, no, I didn't read.
I couldn't remember. I knew you were in that class.
Well, I'm very impressed, and I got to be involved in a lot of the process, so. Thank you all, and could we give them a round? Hi, good of the order. Seeing, we'll adjourn then. We'll adjourn this meeting. Yep.
Before you adjourn, I have a comment. This meeting, I really like to see so many of the public here, and I really appreciate everybody coming. This meeting would not have been possible if Mr. Lund had not pushed and basically insisted on this happen. He did the legwork. contact University of Washington, and I think he deserves a round of applause. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.